Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Sarah Pepp. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced at Pittsburgh City Council. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number seven ninety-three, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the thirty-one seventy-three, thirty-seven nineteen, and thirty-seven twenty-one Butler Street. Bill Number seven ninety-four, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the twenty-seven fifty-first Street Renovations Project. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number seven ninety-five, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Quick Claim Deeds Conveying All of the City's Rights, Titles, and Interests, if any, to the city-owned property located in the first ward in the city at six sixty-one First Avenue and seven hundred Second Avenue, Designated in the deed Registry Office of Allegheny County. Bill Number seven ninety-six, Resolution Amending Resolution five-five-seven of two thousand and sixteen to remove certain properties designated as lot and block numbers, two P one-ten and two P one-twenty, from a transaction and cooperation agreement authorized therein. Bill Number seven ninety-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Aug, Murphy, and Prokoski as attorneys for their client, Willa Mae Matthews, in an amount of thirty-one thousand dollars relating to the full and final settlement of a litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas against the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number seven ninety-eight, Resolution Further Amending Resolution seven ninety-seven of two thousand and seventeen, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Eighteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Eighteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Eighteen through Two Thousand and Twenty-three Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements, city facilities, by two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars and increasing remediation of condemned buildings by two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars." Bill Number seven ninety-nine, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through G, five Vincent, three twenty-nine Industry, three thirty-four East Warrington, eight oh seven Crucible, zero Lovelace, zero Oxfield, and two twenty-three Alice. Bill Number eight hundred, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjjoining Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Sideyard Program, Items A through C, one twenty-six Meadow, zero Kilborn, and ten seventeen Morena. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill Number eight oh one, Resolution Amending Resolution six fifty-four of two thousand and seventeen, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an amended professional services agreement with humane animal rescue for professional services in connection with the detention, care, and/or euthanasia of domesticated animals in order to extend the term until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and add three-hundred-thousand dollars in compensation as the city plans to soon develop an RFP for the forthcoming procurement of said services beyond two thousand and twenty-one. Bill Number eight oh two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement with the Center for Emergency Medicine of Western Pennsylvania for the provision of medical direction services at a cost not to exceed thirty dollars. Said agreement shall commence on January one, two thousand and twenty-one for a term of three years and expires on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill Number eight oh three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number eight forty of two thousand and nineteen, Effective December twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty through Two Thousand and Twenty-five Capital Improvement Program, so as to identify specific projects in City Council Districts one, four, and eight." And Council President Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number eight oh four, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Act and Pay Approval on behalf of the Department of Public Works for Jackie Bowser, Per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June, two thousand and eighteen. That concludes the reading of the legislation for introduction. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at ten a.m. until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the city's channel, YouTube channel. Would a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith, Ms. Strasberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Reverend Burgess Chair.
Here.
Eight members present.
As we join from our remote locations, those of you who want to rise or put your hand on your heart as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now have a moment of silence. Our next order of business is proclamations. We have a number of proclamations. Mr. O'Connor has two.
Mr. O'Connor presents Bill Number eight oh five. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Alfred DeRosa for his tireless work on behalf of the Greater Hazelwood Community in the many ways that it positively impacted its residents, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, October eleventh, two thousand and twenty, to be Alfred DeRosa Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number eight oh six. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Anne Favors for her decades-long role as a much-loved and much-appreciated icon of the Greater Hazelwood Community, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, October eleventh, two thousand and twenty, to be Anne Favors' Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Need a second?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, we are approved. Next one, please.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number eight oh seven. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby thank Coughlin's Law for helping to bring awareness of this devastating disease and help raise funds to potentially save lives, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the month of October, two thousand and twenty, to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number eight oh eight. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize dating violence as a serious issue among college-age students and thank all the Title IX offices in Pittsburgh colleges and universities for their work in protecting your students, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the month of October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those nay. We are, uh, we have one more?
Yes. Councilman Wilson and Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number eight oh nine. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize our German-American residents and honor the achievements of German-Americans throughout our country, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby declare October to be German-American Heritage Month in the city.
Need a motion? Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay. We are, they is approved. Our next order of business is public comment. Like to remind everyone, the rules of council state, the comment, comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before council, profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood. Excuse me, for the record, you have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Apia. Are you with us, Apia? If not, Shaman, pull me. Pull my, are you here? Shaman, are you with us today?
Can I call you back? Yes, I am. Five minutes. Yes, I am. Thank you. Can I be heard?
Yes, we hear you clearly.
Great, thank you. So in the prior call, I mentioned the Indian Removal Act, after mentioning the Indian problem, and also mentioning the Homestead Act, as well as the Land Grant College Act. These things are supported and recognized and acknowledged by Congress as several and many other depredations that have happened to our people and ill-conceived policies forced upon us, the Aboriginal American people. This is our land. Congress has recognized and acknowledged in-House Congress Resolution and recognized our sovereign status. Federal government also has recognized us in Commerce Clause of the Constitution as Indians, not tax, acknowledging the need to exercise the utmost good faith in upholding our treaties and upholding your legal and moral obligations to our people. American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples also supports this and also supports our rights to identify as we are. Our economic responsibilities to ourselves, our policies that we implement upon our own nations are to be respected as well, as well as the political relationship that we share in this government-to-government relationship with Congress. Our social structures, our culture, our spiritual traditions as well are to be honored and recognized and acknowledged by your people as well. Histories of our ancestors are to be acknowledged in your educational systems. Philosophies of ours are also to be respected as well, and especially our rights to our lands, territories, and our resources. So we are here to enforce our government-to-government relationship in recognition of the Great Law of Peace, because we are a peaceful people and we continue to be peaceful as we work with you, City Council, politicians such as state governors and congressmen as well, and the like, as well as the citizens of our land, to respect and honor us as we work together in our government-to-government relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dana Fowler. Dana, are you with us this morning? If not, our next speaker is Ikahana Haumakina. Ikahana Haumakina, are you with me today? All right, about Cody Kebe.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, great, wonderful. My title is Ikahana Haumakina, the Grand Inca of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I'm gonna read onto the record, House Congress Resolution three thirty-one, where it acknowledges the contributions of the Iroquois Confederacy of Nations to the development of the United States Constitution, and to reaffirm the continuing government-to-government relationship between Indian tribes and the United States established in the Constitution. Whereas, the Confederation of the original thirteen colonies into one republic was influenced by our political system developed by the Iroquois Confederacy. As we continue our discussions, I want to acknowledge and thank Deb Gross for reaching back out to us to set up a meeting which will be held this Thursday, and I would employ the rest of City Council to attend this meeting as well. And for those who cannot attend this Thursday's meeting, I would encourage you to schedule a meeting one-on-one with us as well. There are several issues of concern for the Iroquois Confederacy as we are stewards of the land. The food quality coming into what you call the City of Pittsburgh, the homelessness as we drive or travel around the streets of our territory, the miseducation that's taking place that causes cognitive dissonance in our children, the air quality, the water pollution, the food banks that are distributing food that is unpleasant and treated with pesticides, and they are not told that they are consuming things that contain harmful chemicals for the preservation and longevity of the food. We are extremely concerned for the many ill-conceived policies that continue to oppress and marginalize our people. We will continue to stand and speak our truth, and we urge City Council to take a stand with us, to acknowledge us as the people of the land, as the rightful stewards of the land. I find it quite disturbing for one to knowingly take on the identity of a foreign land and people. If I were to travel to Germany or Italy, I would never be considered German or Italian, if you will, if I decided to travel there today. So you see, something has taken place in the psyche of the people of the land to disassociate themselves with land that is that of their ancestors. We are the American people. We will stand strong and we will reclaim the land in which we were born, here in America, except for in the folly of colonization.
Thank you very much. Kota Kebe. Are you with us, Kota?
Yeah.
Hello?
Greetings, greetings. How's everybody?
We're good. You can start off with your name and your neighborhood, please.
Great, this is Cody Kebe of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. As I would like to again remind City Council, and we did get a response from certain members of City Council for a meeting, so I appreciate that. I want to bring about some pieces from the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, which went into effect about June fifteenth of two thousand and sixteen. And Article Nine, under juridical personality, in the states, states, and municipal corporations and organizations, must recognize fully the juridical personality of indigenous peoples, respecting our forms of organization and promoting the full exercise of the rights recognized not only in this declaration, but the Constitution for the United States of America and the constitutions of the several states. Article Ten states we have a right to reject any form of assimilation. And Article Ten, Section One, states that our people have the right to maintain, express, and freely develop our cultural identity in all respects, free from any external attempt at assimilation, meaning assimilating us into any jurisdiction that's foreign to our own, such as any type of municipality jurisdiction, which laws, which those laws would apply, rules, statutes, codes, or policies would apply to our people. And the state nor the city of Pittsburgh has the authority to do that. And states and municipal governments and corporations shall not carry out, adopt, support, or favor any policy of assimilation of our people or the destruction of our cultures, which is running rampant through presumptions of police officers, through the presumptions of magistrates and other city officials. And again, we appreciate accepting the invitation for our meeting, and these are some of the items to be discussed, and from some of the documents of which we are discussing from. And everybody is bound by oath of affirmation pursuant, not only to the Pennsylvania Constitution, but by the municipal code set forth by the City of Pittsburgh and its Home Rule Charter as well. Therefore, the guarantees against racism and racial discrimination and xenophobia and related intolerance towards our people must be eliminated. And states and the City of Pittsburgh must adopt preventive and corrective measures necessary for the full and effective protection of that right to include our right to our cultural identity and integrity. So I look forward to meeting with you all and hopefully we can work together and work out these problems as they are long overdue.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Minister Jay Dominique. Minister Jay Dominique, are you with us today? Minister, are you with us? So I have three speakers I've not been able to identify. One is Apia, if you're here. No? The other one is Dana Fowler, if you're here. The other one is Minister Jay Dominique. Having not been able to identify those speakers, we will end our public comments session. Our next order of business will be presentation of papers. First order of business is, I am the Chair of Urban Recreation, Mr. Coghill, on behalf of myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next is Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Gross, Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, when my gross presents Bill, Bill Number seven ninety-three, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the thirty-one seventy-three through thirty-seven nineteen, thirty-seven twenty-one Butler Street, thirty-one seventy-three, thirty-seven nineteen, thirty-seven twenty-one Butler Street. Bill Number seven ninety-four, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the twenty-seventh fifty-first Street Renovations Project.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Financial Law.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number seven ninety-five, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Quick Claim Deed Conveying All the City's Rights, Titles, and Interests into the city-owned property located in the first ward of the city at six sixty-one First Avenue and seven hundred Second Avenue, Designated in the deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block two P Lot one-ten and Block two P Lot one-twenty, respectively, to the URA of the city. Bill Number seven ninety-six, Resolution Amending Resolution five fifty-seven of two thousand and sixteen to remove certain properties designated as lot and blocks, two P one-ten and two P one-twenty, from the transaction and corporation agreement authorized therein. Bill Number seven ninety-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Aug, Murphy, and Prokoski as attorney for their client, Willa Mae Matthews, in the amount of thirty-one thousand dollars relating to the full and final settlement of a litigation filed at AR in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas against the city. Bill Number seven ninety-eight, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number seven ninety-seven, Adopting the Two Thousand and Eighteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Eighteen CDVG Program and the Two Thousand and Eighteen through Two Thousand and Twenty-three Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements, city facilities, by two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars and increasing remediation of condemned buildings by two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. Bill Number seven ninety-nine, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax Sale Item A through G, five Vincent, three twenty-nine Industry, three thirty-four East Warrington, eight oh seven Cubicle, zero Lovelace, zero Oxfield, two twenty-three Alice. Bill Number eight hundred, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjjoining Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Sideyard Program, Item A through C, one twenty-six Meadow, zero Kilborn, and ten seventeen Morena.
Thank you very much. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number eight oh one, Resolution Amending Resolution six fifty-four of two thousand and seventeen, which authorized the city to enter into an amended professional services agreement with humane animal rescue for professional services in connection with the detention, care, or euthanasia of domesticated animals in order to extend the term until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and adding three-hundred-thousand dollars in compensation as the city plans to soon develop an RFP for the forthcoming procurement of said services beyond two thousand and twenty-one. Bill Number eight oh two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with the Center for Emergency Medicine of Western Pennsylvania for provision of medical directive services at an overall cost not to exceed thirty dollars. Said agreement shall commence on January first, two thousand and twenty-one for a term of three years and expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Councilwoman Strasberger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number eight oh three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number eight forty of two thousand and nineteen, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty CDVG Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty through Two Thousand and Twenty-five Capital Improvement Program so as to identify specific projects in City Council District one, four, eight, and the Mayor's Office and authorize a subsequent agreement for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city. Bill Number eight ten, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number eight fifty-five of two thousand and eleven, entitled, "Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twelve Capital Budget by Transfer and A Total of Twenty Thousand Dollars of War Memorial's Capital Funding from District One Neighborhood Needs to City Planning."
Thank you very much. The Chair does have one communication.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number eight oh four, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Act and Pay Approval on behalf of the Department of Public Works for Jackie Bowser, for the Act and Pay Policy Revised in June, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to read, receive, and file.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opponents, nay, it is approved. We will now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is report of committee for final action, starting with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Mr. President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number seven eighty-six, Reported the Committee on Finance and Law for October seventh, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seven fifty-one, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Dentons, Cohian, and Grisby in an amount not to exceed seven thousand nine hundred forty dollars and sixty-eight cents for professional legal services in connection with immigration matters. Bill number seven seventy-seven, Ordinance Amending Ordinance twenty-two, entitled Directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to Place Before the Qualified Voters of the City at the Twenty-Twenty November General Election a Referendum Question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter Article Two Executive be amended and supplemented by amending the adding and adding new language to section two twenty-nine and two thirty and adding a new section two thirty-one, expanding the powers of the Independent Citizen Police Review Board to allow the Board to require police officers to participate in investigations, conduct and perform audits of the police bureau, and preventing the removal of board members except for just cause and with city council approval to remove the requirement to mail to every registered elector in the city.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Sorry, I forgot to turn on my mic, aye.
Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Madam President, do you want me to keep going, or do you want to pick it up from here?
Please keep going. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number seven eighty-seven, Reported the Committee on Public Safety Services for October seventh, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seven fifty-two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter Into a Grant Agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Department of Homeland Security, to receive a F Y twenty twenty assistance to firefighters' grant, COVID-nineteen supplemental, and further provide for an agreement for the purchase of COVID-related personal protective equipment.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Joe O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Eye nine, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That brings us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number seven eighty-eight, Reported the Committee on Public Works for October seventh, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seven forty-five, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with Regret Pacific Company for the Manufacturing and Distribution of Recycling Containers and Provisions of Containers for the Payment at a Cost Not to Exceed One Million Three Hundred and Fifty-One Thousand Dollars. Bill number seven forty-six, Resolution Amending Resolution three thirty-five of twenty nineteen, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to supplement a professional services agreement with Counsel Eileen Papali, a sole source to provide professional support services to staff of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure at a new cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars, an increase of six thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Joe O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Eye nine, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Bruce Kraus, who is the Chair of the Committee on Human Resources.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill number seven eighty-nine, Reported the Committee on Human Resources for October seventh, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seven forty-nine, Resolution Providing for the Authorization to Make All Legitimate Expenditures for Payments and Agreements with Various Agencies for Job Development and Employment Services Necessary to Implement the Twenty-Twenty Neighborhood Employment Program and Providing the Periodic Transfer of Funds to be Used in the Twenty-Twenty Neighborhood Employment Program for Payment of Costs Not to Exceed One Hundred and Fifty Thousand Dollars. Bill number seven fifty, Resolution Providing the Authorization to Make All Legitimate Expenditures for Payments and Agreements with Various Agencies to Provide Job Development and Employment Services, Wages and Friends Benefits for Supervisor, Staff, Workers' Compensation, Unemployment Compensation, Vocational Skills Training, and On-the-Job Training Outreach Recruitment Costs, and Administrative Expenditures Necessary to Implement the Twenty-Twenty Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program and Providing the Periodic Transfer of Funds to be Used in the Twenty-Twenty Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program and for Payment of Costs thereof not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Ms. Gross.
Aye, sorry.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Joe O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number seven ninety, Reported the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for October seventh, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number one ninety-eight, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zonant Article Code Six, Development Standards, Chapter nine fourteen, Parking, Loading, and Access, in order to eliminate minimum parking requirements for single-family attached dwellings.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any other discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill number seven ninety-one, Reported the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Assets Management for October seventh, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seven fifty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with C I S for one-year term for Albert M. D. Monitoring Application to Predict Malicious Activity on the City's Network by Monitoring, Alerting, and Analyzing Information Gathered by Sensors at a One-Time Cost Not to Exceed fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars with three additional option years, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Bill number seven fifty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into a Multi-Year Agreement with E Plus Technology, Inc., for a Network Monitoring and a Security Professional Services Partner aligned with key business goals of reducing risk, improving service efficiency, and minimizing client impact to include better network utilization, monitoring, and enhanced security posture throughout the enterprise at a cost not to exceed four hundred eighty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. Bill number seven fifty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Change and Innovation Agency, L L C, for access to their learning management system and consultative assistance to adapt the City of Pittsburgh Gold Belt Workshop for e-learning for one year at a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number seven ninety-two, Reported the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for October seventh, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seven forty-seven, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Bolterio Development, forty-one twelve Butler Street. Bill number seven forty-eight, Resolution Amending Resolution three forty-two of twenty nineteen, entitled A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Oxford Development Company to Service Property Manager for four twelve Boulevard of the Allies to Provide for Additional Funding for Management Fees at a Cost Not to Exceed four hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and two cents to Authorize Appropriation of Building Operations at a Cost Not to Exceed one million three hundred eighteen thousand six hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-six cents, and Capital Repairs at an amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-eight thousand six dollars and twenty-six cents for Deposit into Relevant Accounts.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No on Bill seven forty-eight, aye on the other bills.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye on all bills, no on, I believe it's seven forty-eight, if that's the four-one-two building.
Okay. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye on all bills, except for the same bill, the four-one-two building.
Okay, and Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
On Bill seven forty-seven, eyes nine, no zero. On Bill seven forty-eight, eye six, no three.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required numbers of votes is finally passed. That takes us to our meeting announcements this afternoon at one o'clock and one-thirty. Council will hold a briefing on climate action with the Office of Sustainability and Resilience. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October fourteenth, at ten a.m., council will meet for our standing committees meeting. To register to speak, please call the clerk's office at four-one-two-two-five-five-two-one-three-eight by nine a.m. tomorrow morning. Also, tomorrow afternoon at one-thirty, cablecast public hearing is scheduled via the Zoom platform on Bill six forty-six, six eighty-two, and six eighty-three, as relate to the historic designation for the John P. Robbins Civic Building, the Honaker Rosenberg House, and the Spring Hill School. To register to speak, please call the clerk's office at, again, four-one-two-two-five-five-two-one-three-eight by eleven-thirty a.m. tomorrow morning. You may also submit comment by emailing City Clerk's Office, that's cityclerks@pittsburghpa.gov. Please note that written comments will not be read during the meeting. And now we had motions and resolutions, members of council, what is your pleasure? I saw Councilman Gross.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Burgess. I just wanted to say I apologize for the interruption earlier, and I have two children and two dogs in my house, and I was just apologize for the interruption and solidarity with all the other people who have small children to take care of and other people who are dependents in their lives as we all try to work and take care of others.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Reverend.
President Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Rev. I just wanted to thank you for chairing the meetings for the past few weeks and all the members of council for reaching out and for all the kindness. I had to take some time off, as you know, and I just want to thank you all for your for your help and support.
We're family, and we're in this thing together, as I say in the church. Other concerns? Is there any other comments? If not, I will say, Councilman Gross, I actually, Councilwoman Gross, I actually enjoy the children. I enjoy hearing them. I am in church, when the members try to have crying babies leave, I tell them to stay. That means there's life in the church, right? I enjoy hearing the young children, so it never bothers me. I hear Daniel's children sometimes, too. I miss with my kids where you enjoy this time. It goes, this may might be the time to say this, but enjoy this time. It goes faster than you think, you know? And having, you know, now four grown kids, trust me, it goes, and same thing, Bobby, it goes quicker, goes faster than you think. And enjoy the time with the babies, Erica, as, you know, during this time, it's a great time. And bless your children, we pray for them every night. With that, I need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? We are adjourned.